Good morning, welcome to the August 10 meeting of the planning commission. Will you please join me in the flag salute? Ready, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the American state of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ruck.
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne.
Here.
Chair Anstott.
Here.
Okay. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Nora back officially, we missed you, and to welcome Phil White. We're finally at full strength again, which makes it a lot easier to operate. You've got cell phones, guys, please check them off, and you probably know about the parking, they'll ticket you if you're out here, so be careful. Now's the time, set aside for public comments on matters not on the agenda. I have no signature cards, I don't see anybody other than the applicant. Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item of business is the approval of the minutes of July 13th, is there a discussion and/or a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. We'll vote here, I assume. Madam Clerk, am I moving too fast? Is it too fast? Too fast? Okay. Moving on, the first and basically the only item on the agenda is PL 1600301, a petition by Underwood Farms for an application to increase the operational intensity of their agricultural promotion facility. In other words, a modification of their CUP. Could I have the staff report, please?
Good morning, Chair Anstott and members of the commission. Welcome back especially to Commissioner Duquesne, it's very good to see you, and thank you, Mr. White, for joining the party. Okay, I have a brief presentation. As the chair said, this is the Underwood Family Farms project, it's a request for a modified conditional use permit. This facility currently operates along with a separate temporary event facility nearby under a single CUP, CUP 4951. And so what this case involves is a separate permit for the Underwood Family Farms and later a separate permit for the Tierra Rahada Ranch temporary event facility, which your commission will be seeing sometime soon in the future. But today, it's just Underwood Family Farms. And I'll figure out how to use this. The, there we go. Okay, here's just a regional location map. As you may know, the Underwood Family Farms facility is located on Sunset Valley Road in the unincorporated area between the city of Moore Park and the city of Thousand Oaks. And that shows you the approximate location. Here's a closer view of the project site. To the east is the SR 23 freeway, here is Tierra Rahada Road, Sunset Valley Road, and here is the project site outlined in white on the map. As you can see, it's a very rural area out there dominated by agricultural uses. Another closer picture, the area that is subject to the current permit that authorizes the Underwood Family Farms extends over here in this manner, and as I mentioned earlier, this facility is being split from the other facility to have separate CUPs, and as part of this project, they're adding this parcel to the CUP area.
Excuse me, Ms. Rucka.
Yes?
Just for clarification, could you back up a slide? That red and yellow line across the bottom, that's the city limits of Thousand Oaks, is that correct?
That is correct.
And would you identify Reed Road as well?
Right there.
All the way to the end, all the way to the freeway, as I recall?
It goes around.
It dead-ends.
It dead-ends.
At least, it used to dead-end, yeah.
It goes up this hill right here.
Okay, great, thank you.
And just while we're on this slide, here's Sunset Valley Road, and here's Tierra Rahada, and there's Reed, and then there's Moore Park Avenue over here, so there's the loop in the vicinity.
Thank you.
This is a good picture to take a look. Again, here's Sunset Valley Road, here is the area that is used for promotional uses, it's approximately six acres, which has, you know, a farm stand, produce stand, and various other ag promotional uses such as animal pens and things like that, we'll be talking more about this later. This right here, actually at the time this photograph was made, this is a corn maze that's part of the festival activities in the fall. So here's a chart, just talks about the history, the, you know, starting in 1998, we had a parcel map waiver to legalize the lots that are involved with the project. In 1998 also, the ag promotional uses were approved under CUP 4951, and of course, under that same CUP, there are separate temporary event facility, which is not before you today, but just in terms of Underwood, that's when the CUP was granted, in 1998. There was some other subdivision action just having to do with legalization of lots and a zone change to open space in 2004. There was a modification in 2005. There was an LCA contract entered into in 2008, and in 2015, that was a couple years ago, pursuant to the terms of CUP 4951, the applicant was able to get through an administrative action, a 10-year extension on the effective period of the permit, and that was provided for in the original permit. We are here today because they are asking to increase the intensity of the operation as well as split this facility from the other facility that's under this permit. And that shows you the split of the historic CUP 4951 area, and TRR is Tierra Rahada Ranch, which is a separate project which will be coming for you later. And of course, you can see the ag promotional uses up here, that area, and that constitutes approximately 15% of the project as is currently designed. So here are all sort of a list of the existing permitted uses on the site, you have farm and animal exhibits, and you have a sales building, a little office and ticket booth, some accessory structures which largely are animal-related, and there's, you know, approximately 200 spaces there that are immediately adjacent to the site for day-to-day visiting. There's a farm worker dwelling on the site, which is used for some administrative uses. They have portable restroom facilities, and the attendance under the current permit is limited to approximately 3,000 people per day for 18 days a year. There's no alcohol, fireworks, or amplified music allowed, and there's no non-agricultural temporary events. Just some pictures, the agricultural sales building and the educational activities, you know, as a matter of disclosure, I'll be bringing my grandchildren here should your commission decide to grant a permit. Again, some animal display areas. This is Ms. Hood's favorite, is the goat driving the truck. Here are the requested changes in the permit. The CUP area is going to expand from the current 31 acres on the Underwood site to 40 acres. They're going to install an upgraded restroom unit to replace some of the portable restrooms, and that's similar to what has been done on other facilities in the area, a little better restroom unit. They're going to have a food service truck there on a full-time basis, and again, we're going to overtly authorize the farm worker dwelling to be used for some administrative activities such as meetings and such, since it's sitting right there. They're going to add 350 parking spaces on an adjacent parcel for day-to-day use through a parking agreement, and they're also adding Christmas tree sales during the 45 days prior to December 25th. Again, here's the changes, which are the major changes in the facility that are being proposed today. The Easter Festival, they run two large festivals a year. The Easter Festival occurs over a two-week period with three weekends. The Harvest Festival occurs in October over a four-week, five-weekend period, and as you can see, it starts at 9:00 in the morning, so there isn't any peak hour traffic involved in the morning anyway. The attendance would, allowable attendance would go up to 8,500 people, there'd be, and because of, you know, fire department review of this facility, there's going to be some additional conditions regarding the requirement for emergency access points on both Sunset Valley and Reed Road, an expansion of the onsite parking in the festival activity area that is used temporarily during 46 days a year, and there's going to be off-site parking on 16 acres in the vicinity that are, again, through parking agreements that will be entered into each year. The total number of available parking spaces would be approximately 2,785, and the new CUP, they're requesting a 30-year term on the CUP. Just a close-up, this would be the new permit area that is requested. Highlighted up there on the left would be the area on an off-site parcel that they would have for day-to-day parking on a permanent year-round basis. Right now, the parking is in the same area, but it's pretty much limited to right along here, and so they've upgraded the access road here, and they're going to have parking in this triangle on the adjoining property. So I have various things highlighted here. During a festival activity, this parcel up here would be used for temporary parking. The festival activity area would be to the south here, that'd be, again, be used a maximum of 46 days a year. There'd be additional onsite festival parking here and here, and this is, all this put together is your 2,700 spaces. Now, these parking areas, we'll have some pictures of them later, they're used for parking only during those festival times, and the rest of the year, they are being actively cultivated. In fact, I was out there on Monday, and they're actively cultivating it now, and as some of her pictures will show, that these parking areas are used for agriculture most of the year, so they don't actually count as a loss of agricultural use or soils. Anyway, this is a diagram just showing where the parking is for the festivals. Here is a diagram where the, currently, there is this access point to the site, the fire department, as you would expect, wants additional emergency access points, so there'd be one here on Sunset Valley Road, access through the site, and there'd be another one here on Reed Road, also access through existing roads on the site. Just some pictures of the site, this is the park, over here is Sunset Valley Road, this is the parking right adjacent to the farm stand, the produce building, this is another view of that same area. This area here, which is currently planted in vegetables, that would be during the Harvest Festival, that would be parking up to these trees, but most of the year, it would look This is the parking, the off-site parking area, basically this cornfield is the off-site parking area during festival times that was shown in the, that's on the Tierra Rahada Ranch property, and so it's used for agriculture for most of the year. This is, we're standing in the festival area, this area here is where festivals would occur, including this area. This was being actively prepared for another crop when we were there, and this is, this picture was taken on Monday. This is butter lettuce and various other things over here. Here is the promotional use area back here with the agricultural exhibits, and so this is what the festival area looks like during most of the year. Just some ground-level pictures, this would be the emergency access point, this is Sunset Valley Road, we're looking south, this is the emergency access point on Sunset Valley Road, this is another view of the same spot, they would, this is actually a driveway to an off-site residence, and they would get an easement that would connect to this at a point near this entrance. This is the second one, this is Reed Road, this is looking west, and here's, there's the access point right there, and here again is the access point, and it's existing ranch road that leads out to Reed Road. We conducted environmental review, of course, as we do on every project, we prepared a mitigated negative declaration, it was out for public review for a month, we provided notice to 17 parcels in the vicinity and an ad, and did our standard thing, we also sent it to the state clearinghouse because it could potentially involve traffic going to SR 23, and so it got the full deal. The one potentially significant cumulative impact that was identified in that document is the concept that if the CASAR wedding facility, temporary event facility to the north, and the Tierra Rahada facility, and Underwood, all had a major event on the same day, that you could have a problem at the intersection of Tierra Rahada Road and Sunset Valley Road. And so there is a mitigation measure that was identified in the MND and is carried through in the conditions of approval to have a traffic control plan as to how to handle the increase in traffic on a Sunday afternoon at that intersection. And a part of that, the city of Moore Park had some input into that, that you have to get an encroachment permit from the city for any activities and signings that they're going to do over there, because the roadway is actually in the city, that intersection is in the city of Moore Park. And again, this is the mitigation measure. Just some pictures, here is the critical intersection, Sunset Valley Road and Tierra Rahada Road. On the left, we're traveling westbound on Tierra Rahada, that's the left-hand turnpocket going on to Sunset Valley Road. This is, the one on the right is your right at the intersection. And again, this is, we're again turning on this intersection, so you, on the left, you'd be turning onto Sunset Valley, and here is Sunset Valley Road on the right. And as you can see, you have pretty good sight distance on Sunset Valley Road. It's a straight-as-a-string road, and there's virtually no obstruction of vision down this road. This is the entrance to Underwood Farms, the current entrance, and, you know, so there's a couple views from both the north and the south, and it's a pretty wide entrance, and it's full view in both directions. One thing I can point out is that we did look at the accident records for a six-year period for both Sunset Valley Road and the intersection of Tierra Rahada, and during that six years, there were a total of two accidents, and neither were involved, apparently involved with Underwood people, although it's hard to tell, but it wasn't a high accident rate anyway. So on Sunset Valley Road especially, there was only one accident in a six-year period, so we didn't identify a significant safety issue. Again, other views of this, one on the left is your, you're at Sunset Valley Road, and you're turning right on Tierra Rahada, heading toward SR 23, and that's the same picture on the right there. This is just a look at Reed Road, so this would be the boundary of the city of Thousand Oaks, it would be the yellow stripe, and this is looking to the east toward Moore Park Road from the intersection with Sunset Valley. On the right is a picture of, at the other end of Reed Road where you, it connects to Moore Park Avenue, which is, you're looking at northbound Moore Park Avenue. We did receive a letter from Caltrans, and their conclusion was that the facility would not have any adverse effect on the nearest Caltrans facility, which was State Route 23. You know, when we put out the MND, it's of course a draft document, we did clarify in that document that the farm worker dwelling and the greenhouse, which was previously separately permitted, there was no reason not to have it included in this permit, so it's not separately permitted, because it's integral to the facility, so we clarified that, and then, and we also clarified that the permit for Underwood does not involve temporary events, so there's no weddings going on at the Underwood facility, and we made sure that was clear in the MND that is before you today. We did, well, more than our standard noticing, because there's, the parcels are so big, we extended it out to 500 feet to a minimum number of parcels, and we provided notice to anyone we could think of, including the adjoining cities. The staff recommended actions, I'll spare you and not read them, needless to say, staff found that the project, that you can make the appropriate findings to grant the modified CUP, we did not find any significant impacts that were not able to be mitigated adequately, and we recommend approval of the project. And so with that, I am available for questions, as is Monica Hood.
I did not note any history violations of CUPs.
Well, the, part of the reason we're here is because the facility, we have not issued notices of violation, let's put it that way, but the facility has grown in popularity beyond what we believe that the previous CUP allows, and that's why they're in here asking for a modified CUP to cover the activities that are going on today.
And you advised of the notices given, I didn't note any opposition file, other than a letter from city of Moore Park wanting their money.
Well, the city of Moore Park sent a letter early on in the process, they didn't actually comment on the environmental document saying they requested a traffic mitigation fee. We cannot collect traffic mitigation fee for the city of Moore Park for reasons similar to other cases, they have not adopted a mitigation fee program in accordance with the mitigation fee act. However, the applicant may have something to say in that regard.
Thank you, sir. At this point, we'll call for disclosures. I'd like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner White?
I will comment that I'm familiar with the property, having attended the Harvest Festival in years past.
Nora?
I visited the site the other day and made some notes about some of my observations, and I'll bring those up during the hearing.
Maggie?
I too am familiar with the site, having attended the Easter Festival the last couple of years.
Richard?
I also am familiar with the site going back 40 years, probably. I'm also acquainted with Mr. Newton and Mr. Breckeney from my days in Moore Park, the chief there. Good to see you again.
I'm acquainted with Mr. Craig Underwood, I had the pleasure of serving with him on the Ventura County Farm Bureau as a director, that's been some years past, it's nice to see you, Craig, but I don't believe that's any cause for me to recuse myself. Okay, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant. Good morning, sir, state your name and address for the record.
John, John Newton, 159 Moon Song Court in Moore Park, representing the applicant. I really don't have a lot to present or request of you this morning, because we're in agreement with the staff recommendation, and Mr. Underwood is willing to accept the proposed conditions of approval. There is one clarification I would like to make, it's probably the only thing that raised any concern in the environmental analysis, which was the intersection functioning at less than LOSC if all three venues were operating at the same time, I think staff just mentioned that. Our traffic consultant who prepared the traffic studies for this raised a question about condition 33C2, and the question was, had to do with when a traffic control officer needed to be retained and utilized at the intersection, and you'll notice in the wording of that condition, I don't think we need to go there, but it basically says "as needed." So what that all means, and what everybody seems to understand and does understand, is if the traffic control plan indicates that that type of officer is needed, then one would be retained and one would be utilized. The reason I raise that is, that's not going to occur, in our opinion, and it's primarily because one of the adjacent operators, the CASAR operation that was mentioned earlier, they have a condition in their permit that requires them to coordinate with Underwood Family Farms and Tierra Rahada, so that all three operations are not functioning at the same time. And that has worked for years with us, and it will continue to work, and is in fact, it's a requirement of the CASAR permit, so we're not going to have an LOS problem at that intersection. However, we will be doing a traffic control plan, and Public Works Transportation has indicated that once that's done, it probably would be approved on a biannual basis or even longer, so that it's not having to be done each year, assuming that things work as I suggest, that we're not going to have traffic conflicts at that intersection. Moore Park was mentioned, I will say that there is a, I guess it's a dispute, an ongoing difference of opinion between the city and the county over this traffic impact mitigation fee program. We were sort of caught in that during the process. We have approached the city of Moore Park and reached an agreement with them, and paid them a fee outside of the city-county program, so they're not, no longer in opposition, or no longer wanting to raise the issue of collecting a fee and challenging the county. With that, I guess, and I've said it before, we support the recommendation, Mr. Underwood is willing to accept the conditions, and I will say that the staff, Monica in particular, and her supervisor, Brian Barka, have done a wonderful job. It's been a long tedious process separating these It's been a long tedious process separating these two permits, got to be very complex, but they worked with us diligently in getting conditions written so that they are clear and concise, so that when we're all not here, someone will be able to pick up this permit and understand exactly what was agreed to. So I really appreciate all of the help that they gave us, and they've done a wonderful job for you, for the county, and for the public in that regard. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Nora, go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
I just have some detailed questions based on observations I made when I went and observed the farm in action, and it's terrific operation. One thing I noticed is the terms of conditions say that there's no amplified music, but there is amplification of songs with your little chicken show, you know, the automated chickens. Is that a violation of the condition? Are you going to get rid of that feature?
I'm going to ask staff to give me a little help on this one. We've discussed it with them. It's like the Harvest Festival has small bands that come, and they orient themselves away from the Kramer residence, which is the one in the middle. You know, we work really closely with that, the people in that residence to make sure there's not problems. So we aim the music to the north, but there isn't a small band that exists today that doesn't have an amplifier, and the Chicken Show has a little amplifier. The no amplified music, I believe, is a carryover from the next permit you'll hear, which is Tierra Raja Ranch, which has a lot of weddings in their venue. And they have external amplification. It's, it's a much larger operation. So there's noise limits that they must meet and all that sort of thing. I don't, the language says no amplified music. It could be a problem if somebody really took a hard look and said that Chicken Show has an amplifier, or one of the local bands has an amplifier, but it's not the type of external amplification that we'll find in the Tierra Raja permit.
The only suggestion I would make, because you can't hear it off-site, is, is, you know, to, to clarify the, the purpose of the no amplified music, you know, it's not like it carries at all. You know, it doesn't even carry throughout the site, but it is amplified music, and it caught my attention. Another thing, right next to that is like a little, I don't know, a structure that has bags and plastic things to do your, pick your own crops. And I noticed that there was a plug, like an outlet, to plug things in. I wondered if that was live. There's little kids, and I had two boys, so I looked at that and thought, hmm, I wonder if, if somebody could poke their fingers in it. That's just another observation that I made when I was out there. Do you, do you happen to know, or?
No, I don't.
I think it could be taken care of. It could just be fixed. It doesn't have to go to this level, but I'm a detailed person, and I can't, I can't unsee it.
I don't, but Mr. Underwood will probably have some comments here. I don't think he will probably know about that specific outlet, but he will go back there today. I just know him, and they'll take a look at it, and if it needs a protector or some kind of a shield, he'll put it on.
Exactly. The other thing I noticed in the terms and conditions, it says 15 miles an hour, but the posted limit is 10. Could we have consistency there? I don't know if...
This is the onsite?
Yeah. Onsite, it says 10 miles an hour, but in the conditions it says 15.
They, they, they on their own reduced it to work with dust control and the traffic congestion, so they did it on their own, but 15 is the limit.
That was my next question.
Okay.
What do you do about dust control?
Watering.
Okay.
Water the roads. There's a condition requiring that.
Do you have a lost and found?
Pardon?
Do you have a lost and found?
Yes.
And do you have first aid?
Yes.
Okay.
And extensive first aid training for all the employees.
Okay, that's it for me. My impression was, even though there was a, a sign to beware of the bees, and I was told, you know, beware of the bees, I didn't, I was just struck with really what a safe place it was. There were a lot of families there. My kids are grown now, but we've gone for other activities there over the years. It's an amazing resource for the community, and it is much loved. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We have the applicant. Greg, are you going to speak to us?
I'd like to.
Sure. Name and address, sir.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I certainly hope we don't have to get rid of the Chicken Show, because it took me five years to convince everybody on, in our management group that we should do it. So nobody could figure out how we could pay for this expensive Chicken Show, and finally I just said we got to do it. So we've, we've been up at Tierra Raja since 1994, when we first talked to Rick and Linnea about doing a joint venture up there, and it seemed like there were some synergies that we could work together. I mean, Rick started Pick Your Own up there in the, in the mid-'70s. We followed behind that when our cannery-tomato fields were, were left because the Hunts Cannery wouldn't take them all, so we started doing You Pick by putting an ad in LA Times, and people responded to that. And today, we still have probably 200 or more people that come out on Labor Day to pick tomatoes, and our largest pickers pick over 2,000 pounds in a day. So since 1994, we've been up here. We've opened our produce stand in Somus in 1980, and this is the 20th anniversary of our festival up there. And I'm pretty proud to say that we've not had a complaint in the 20 years that we've been operating it. There are always some incidents, probably four or five every year, from heat, bee stings, people getting sick, cuts, whatever. My wife's a registered nurse, so she's, she's our staff nurse during the festival. We have CPR, you know, a number of the people are trained in CPR. We also have a, I forget the term, heart defibrillator. We have that, and people are trained in how to use that. Over the years, the, the operation has certainly changed. When we first started up there, it was all You Pick and our produce stand, and over time, we responded to what people seemed to want. And that started with birthday parties. We'd been doing tours at our facility in Camrio for years, just doing them for free. So then we expanded that, and we started doing school tours. And today, we have about 50,000 children who visit between the spring and the fall, who come out for school tours. And I think we're pretty well organized in doing those and, and offer a, a very personal experience, even though there are quite a few children that come to the farm. In the CUP, there's about 58 conditions, and really, none of those conditions are things that we're not currently doing. They're just memorializing them, and, you know, now we're going to have to document them. Some of them, we're increasing the intensity. The parking plan that was presented, we actually did that before, long before we started the CUP. We did that about four years ago, when we hired Walker and Associates, which is the firm that does most of the parking plans for Los Angeles. They've done the parking plan for LA. You know, ours is pretty simple. It's just look at what we've got and lay out the parking places, but it told us what we had available. I don't know, I, I don't know what, what more I can say, other than this is something that I particularly enjoy doing. You know, it's very satisfying. I'd like to read to you our mission statement, which we repeat, I should, I should know it. Most of our, most of the team knows it, because we, we state it every time we have our team meeting. But our mission is to strengthen the relationship between consumers and our farm through direct marketing of high-quality produce and positive farm experiences. The mission will be accomplished profitably while adhering to the highest standards of ethics and integrity. What we really want to do is connect, connect the consumer to the farm, and we do that through our farmers' markets, our produce stands, coming out to pick all the activities that we have out there. We'd like to create new customers by teaching kids where their food comes from and getting them to actually enjoy picking their own fruits and vegetables. So if we can educate through entertainment, which we think is the best way to educate, that's, that's what our goal is. So can I answer any questions?
Any questions?
No? Thank you.
Is anyone else speaking?
Good morning. I'm Rick Breckenye. I live at 15, or, excuse me, 5191 Reed Road, Moore Park at the Tierra Raja Ranch. As you may or may not know, I started the Pick Your Own farm in roadside business on this property in the early 1970s, and subsequently, thankfully, sold a 40-acre parcel to Craig Underwood about 20 years ago or so. I am here today to urge your board to approve the new CUP as recommended by staff. Craig and his staff has created, have created a wonderful farm experience for the public to enjoy and to learn from. The joyful sound of young students riding in the tractor-drawn wagons on the way to the picking fields is a wonderful thing to experience, and one that I've had the opportunity to enjoy countless times. And those students will never forget the picking their first carrot or tasting that lecious strawberry they just picked. The positive response from the public is clear evidence of the quality of the Underwood operation. They have taken this model farm to a level that is recognized across the country as one of the best, as evidenced by the fact that the North American Farmers Market, Direct Marketing Association tour will be visiting this location for the second time this winter. Of course, with popularity and growth in the business, there arise new challenges, but in every case, Craig has addressed and resolved these problems. Our property surrounds the Underwoods, and Craig leases some of our land for crop production and in October for parking. We have been able to operate together amicably and cooperatively for all these years, and I look forward to many more to come. The Underwood Family Farm is a treasure for Ventura County, and I wholeheartedly support its continuing into the future. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. I don't see anybody, but is there any opposition? Seeing none, we'll then ask for closing staff comments.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I have, I have no opinion on chickens, other than we'd like to add to the end of a, well, in condition one, the following. Amplified music or sound that cannot be detected from off-site sensitive receptors is authorized. If detected, such amplified sound can be authorized with a signed waiver or waivers pursuant to NCZO requirements. And then we'd also like to modify condition 57 to refer to 10 miles per hour rather than 15 miles per hour. So those are the only changes in conditions that we'd recommend. Other than that, we haven't detected a problem.
Any questions of staff? While seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Questions? Suggestions? Motion?
I would just like to move approval per the staff recommendations with the changes. And do we need to add this?
Yes.
Can we add exhibit 10?
Yes.
To the record.
You talking about the prior point?
Yes.
Yes. Exhibit, it's marked exhibit 10 at the bottom.
That's my motion.
Is there more discussion or a second?
I would like to second that motion, and I would also like to say, Mr. Underwood, you ran a first-class operation, having been there many times and having had my granddaughter come there as a student. Thank you.
I'm glad the property, and the adjacent property are being used and continue to be used in ag. I'm very familiar with ag. I, grandparents were ag workers. My summers were spent picking melons and carrots and tomatoes and staking tomatoes, and I'm still very familiar with all that. So I'm glad to see there's still an effort being made, being kept in place to not lose that connection with, with our ag community. Congratulations. Thank you. Well done. For the record, I'd like to agree with the previous statement that your operation is a treasure to Ventura County, and we thank you for it, and my grandsons thank you for it. Okay, we have a motion and a, do we have a second? Yes, Phil, I'm sorry.
May I speak?
Sure.
Okay, I, as I said before, I am familiar with the site, having attended the Harvest Festival, and I am acquainted with the Underwood family, and I do intend to support the motion to approve the CUP as staffs recommended. And I support it in large part because it promotes agriculture, and it works to educate children and the public about agriculture. In the general plan update, we've heard over and over again from Ventura County residents about the importance of agriculture, and allowing this project to continue will help keep the importance of agriculture in the minds of county residents.
All right, vote. We can do a voice vote if it'll expedite. Okay, we're going to do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Underwood. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chair Anstott, and members of the commission. I would also like to extend my congratulations to Mr. Underwood and to Mr. Newton. I've worked with John Newton here for the last 20-plus years on all sorts of projects in our careers, and, and sometimes the, the consultants don't get the recognition that they're due. They do a lot of work in the background, including taking on some, you know, serious issues with the, with the city of Moore Park, so I appreciate all that Mr. Newton has done on this project, and always have, always had fun working on him from our mining years to, to this. So well done to you. And I'll be there with my children also, Mr. Underwood. They, they love Underwood Family Farms. So let me just go over a couple of things, what we're going to be doing. We have our hearing that we had today, and I also wanted to say thank you to Monica for, for doing, she didn't do the presentation, but she did the staff report, and I read, as Mr. Barnes does, dozens and dozens and dozens of staff reports coming up from all different levels, and the staff report that she did on this case was just exceptional. I'm a pretty heavy editor, and it was fun to sit down and read a complicated case where you had to take apart two permits and, and put them together succinctly. That wasn't an easy project, and she did a really good job on that, so I was very happy about that. So thank you. So she, she's also moving into, into our condition compliance section, so you probably won't see her very much down here, so I wanted to, to give her that recognition while she was in front of you. So we have one hearing on August 17th. So next week, we'll be meeting again, and we're only going to have three commissioners for that, for that meeting. Is that, that correct? So Commissioner Dukas will not be here, and Commissioner Anstott will not be here.
I will be here.
You will be here. Okay, thank you very much for that. It's always a little dicey with three, because we need all three in either direction to have a land use decision here. And so we haven't had a full commission for, for quite some time, so we do have... And so we haven't had a full commission for, for quite some time, so we do have appeals stacked up, so we're going to have a very busy, Mr. Barca.
Brian, take it outside. I think that's what you meant to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So as far as I can see on the calendar, and hopefully we will be able to get your November attendance at this point, I only have one day, and that is September the seventh, where I have all five planning commissioners. So one day for the next couple of months. And so we're going to have to start putting items, you know, appeal items, we have quite a few appeal items, so we're going to start putting them on there where we only have four, because I don't think that our clients can wait until, you know, November the ninth, and I don't even have your attendance at November the ninth. So it's going to be very important for us to understand your attendance, especially in November, because we're going to have the general plan update come, and we want to make sure all five of you are here. And so I already have a no for November second, so hopefully November ninth is, is what we would be looking for, for that. And so unless the, any commissioner has any concerns about hearing anything, even in their district, with only four of you in attendance, I mean, that's kind of what we would like to do now, here now, or to, to make sure that we're looking at the agenda correctly. It's pretty unusual for us to not get, you know, to go such a long time without having all five of you here. So unless there's any concerns, we're just going to move forward and start scheduling things where there's only four of you as, as we can.
Is there any particular magic, assuming no one would object to having it on another day if Thursday's the problem?
Well, we set the. We set the calendar at the beginning of the year, so when it's set, it says it's set for Thursday mornings at eight-thirty in this room, so yeah, that is the way that it works. And so hopefully, before you leave today, after the hearing is closed, then Anna or Megan can go over the, the calendar with you, and we'll make sure that we've recorded it correctly. And then, and then you'll just see items starting to appear, whether or not you're able to attend or not. And so the September seventh hearing that you will be here, so everybody is glomming on to that date, and so you'll be here for, for quite a while, because we are going to have two appeals for oil and gas, and then we're also going to have, and we have another oil and gas appeal filed by the city of Ojai, so we're going to need to schedule that very soon as well. So we're going to, to schedule that one as soon as we can. I owe the city a call to let them know a, a date certain that we're going to be able to schedule that on. But on September seventh, we're going to hear two oil and gas appeals, and we have a public hearing regarding the adoption of amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance, where we're, this is a consistency project that we're working on to make our zoning maps consistent with the general plan. So we have that coming before you on the seventh as well, and then that will be going to the board on September the nineteenth. Also, on the seventh, your commission has asked for updates on several things that we're working on. One of those was the cannabis regulations, another thing is the short-term rentals. So the agency director, Chris Stevens, is working on both of those, and so he will come, we were scheduled, I think, the last time that we met, although there was only three of you here, so we decided not to do it that date. We wanted to do that when there was all five of you here. So he is going to come at the end of that hearing and do an overview on short-term rentals and where we're at with that, and, and what our timing looks like for the planning commission to be able to see that. And he'll be coming back at the next time we find a meeting for you on cannabis regulations and, and the county's history with that. And then also, as soon as I can find another date where all five of you will be here, we talked recently back in June about having an, an update or an overview for you all about all of the board direction that we have, so all of the things that our long-range planning department is working on. You know, they're working on dark skies in Ojai, they're working on wildlife migration corridors, you know, we clearly have the general plan going on, we have some sea-level-wise projects going on. So we go to the board annually, and, and they, give them an update on projects that we're working on, and they prioritize projects that are critical to them, so we'll come and share that project with you too, as soon as we have another date with all, with all five of you. So that is the update that I have, unless you have something for me.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Every time we do something in or near the city of Moore Park, we always run into this traffic situation and fee, what is it about the city of Moore Park and the county that they can't reconcile their differences, so we don't keep having these physicians requesting fees and going through the paperwork and the hassle with them? And Mr. Underwood having to pay something he didn't have to pay, is there some, they're just not getting the message?
Oh, I, I would say that they're getting the message, right? So it's just a, it's an agreement between the city and the county, a traffic impact mitigation fee, and the agreement essentially says, if you want the county to collect your fee for you and then pass it on to you as the city, then you have to have some nexus and rough proportionality on the fee that you're charging and, and, and to the, that we would pass on to you. So since the city has not done that, the county is just simply not collecting it for them.
So they're collecting it themselves, as they did in this case, I guess?
They are collecting it themselves, that's true.
Okay.
Oops.
Excuse me, I just, I just want to clarify, as, as the applicant just said, Moore Park's not collecting a traffic impact mitigation fee under our ordinance. They're collecting their own fee, and we don't know what that fee is. The county has nothing to do with that. And so that's between the applicant and the city of Moore Park, and, and so I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Anybody have anything further? Phil, you survived. Nora, welcome back. Okay, we'll close this meeting then. Done.
Welcome.